Family has a property that's part of the family's property, but it's not.
None.
You are a member of the family that has a financial interest in the property and the property that's part of the family's property, but it's not.
None.
I think I like the laws of health.
Mayor Council, this particular, uh, this particular application is to, Mr. Hurst would like to remove a two lot and a mobile home car and make them available for sale for single-family dwellers. And so he requested that they be divided up into RA, uh, they be all the other zoning requirements. We reviewed it for the Zoning Procedures Act. Uh, this went before planning and zoning as well, and it was approved unanimously. Uh, there wasn't discussion on it, but it was approved and finally now recommend. Any questions?
Questions, gentlemen? Okay. I don't think so, do you? I think we're good.
Okay, I'd like to have a little comment first, but like, hey, uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we have those public hearings taken care of, and I'd like to, um, remind everybody that we are, uh, tonight conducting our workshop, which means we won't actually be voting on any of the items we'll be discussing, uh, just discussing, and then, uh, there may be some items that we ask, uh, for additional information or, or continue a discussion, but there will, there will be no voting tonight. And, um, Councilman Sales is calling in this evening. That's why we have this big device here on the table. Uh, he is flying in from out of town, plane was delayed, so we have him on the telephone, and Councilman Terrell is coming in now. Uh, the first item on our agenda, uh, as far as presentations go, include, um, two proclamations, and that's always a fun job that we get to do. Uh, the first proclamation that we have is proclaiming, uh, Georgia Retired Educators Day. Do we have any folks that are here for that special event to join us? Okay, let me just read this application very, uh, excuse me, proclamation very quickly, and then we'll move on to the next one. Uh, we are proclaiming November the third is Retired Educators Day, and the proclamation says, whereas the state, the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November the third, twenty nineteen, as required, uh, I can't talk, Retired Educators Day in Georgia, and whereas there are more than a hundred and thirty thousand retired educators in Georgia, thirty thousand of whom are members in the Georgia Retired Educators Association, and whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state, and whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society, whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. Now therefore, I Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the day of November the third as Retired Educators Day and call upon all citizens of Tifton to observe that day in an appropriate manner honoring all of our retired educators, and that is given under my hand and seal this day, uh, seventh day of October, twenty nineteen. So we'll make sure that those representatives get that copy of that proclamation. And then we all have, also have another special proclamation, and I see some of our friends back here, uh, with Go Light Up Your World Day, so if y'all would like to join me up front, and I will present this to you. And we're always happy to work with the wonderful Lily Backin Tire. She's so sweet, does such a good job for everybody. How old is she, Sam? Just by your lungs, okay. Well, let me put this proclamation, recognizing, uh, for, and Go Light Up Your World. The proclamation says, whereas a nonprofit plan, uh, counts on children, shares, towards families, and whether it's for children, family, kids, serving as a local, a tax body, and bringing partners together, developing, about, that way, trying to raise, uh, accounts, taking, uh, children. Whereas all of these places, there are partners, required, since I was acting in false or local relationships, policy makes awareness. To ask good questions, whatever, and whereas having women here, right, plenty, plenty of time, of joining together for our children, best, uh, that, where to go, to seek a life and recognize how beautiful the world is, and I, uh, when it was a full learning, say, and by, the vision, by, and whereas by working together,
Next year first, okay.
Yes, we did the kitchen to bathrooms last year if you remember. But no, yes, we have some, a lot more to do.
Lot more to do, okay. Well, this is so exciting because this is right, as y'all recall, this is right in the middle of our urban redevelopment area, and so this is gonna be really a very nice, a very nice addition to the work that's being done, the work that the city's doing, and hopefully other private developers, and will be a nice enhancement. And Johnny, I know this is in your district. Any comments or questions that you might have? Because I know you may have some constituents that ask some questions or want to know details or anything.
Well, I'm... The renovation is going to take place within the next two to three years.
It would take that long to complete. And it depends on funding. Fund is our hood.
You know how working with the government is, Johnny. It can be very slow.
But I'm glad to see this renovation coming, because they've been there sixty years. If not lo- if not sixty, it ain't but a shoestring weight on me. But now, I'm glad somebody's coming along to take this area, because this is where we need to work on. I mean, it's just time somebody just come up, step up to the plate instead of, you know, just running. You come anybody can run now. But I'm glad to see that this council, you did what the council asked you to do, and I appreciate that.
Very much.
And I appreciate that because it's in my neighborhood and it's in my district. Thank you very much.
Do you want to introduce the board members that are here tonight? We'd like to recognize them and thank them for their hard work.
Yes, we have our chairman, Dr. Homer Day. Vice chairman, Mr. Mark Van Rijckman. We have Ms. Dana Willis with us, and Ms. Dennis Quathead, and John Howard, and Ms. Arthur Pettipore.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all so much for the work that you do. It is a community effort and it's a partnership, and we appreciate your efforts and really are excited about this renovation work. And hopefully things will move quickly, and if there's anything that we can do to help with this process, just let us know. But we're very thankful for the work that you do for our citizens, so thank you all very much for this. Any questions or comments, gentlemen, on the plan and the timeframe and what's going on? It does look very good. We'll look forward to that.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are in the new business section of our agenda this evening, and the next item will be the review of the proposed agreement with Golden Environmental. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to our city manager, Pete Przynski, and Mr. Ricky Hobby.
Mayor Council, we've had some discussion, Rob, we've had some discussion regarding the contract itself, talking about the suggestions that we've had with Richard Golding regarding the contract. So Rob has tucked this up into the agreement, and before you is the document that we're very close. So we wanted to present this to you and kind of go, Ricky's gonna take you through the highlighted areas. These are the changes that we have inserted, and I think there is some red lines that, the areas that Rob has taken out. Uh, we are still, uh, by, uh, one of the, uh, three, uh, four, uh, actually, two contracts. Last thing, the building contract, uh, we are still, uh, by, uh, one of the, uh, three, uh, four contracts. That's one of the complexities moving forward, but if it's okay Ricky, if you want Ricky to take through the highlighted areas, I think it's real important that we take this away. We have literally the rest of October, and then I have to bring this before you in November for your vote, official meeting in November. So we do have one month left, but there's some scenarios that are still ongoing. We have to make sure there's gonna be spots that we've probably missed, but I think we hit a lot of them in this contract. So Ricky, if you'll take us through on each page.
Well, if you want to just turn the page forward. Agreement, that's where we start, something to change. And this is just the definition, we, our roll-off service is no longer exclusive. Broke out the definition, uh, for all. You'll see it further. And under the special services, uh, see, we will both ways access that. This is, right now we have an issue. Further in the agreement, you'll see we're going five. Go, our service. Y'all will move, uh, large pile. These will be handled by special service, clear contact. Private period, that's the price we appreciate. That's what, uh, then they don't accept his price.
So Golden, Golden, they, they go five, they have to contact.
That's part of their customer service.
Why wouldn't we do it the other way? For the, for the residents to put it all out there? They have to contact.
Is that gonna be something you can add it? I don't know how to go ahead and force that.
Why do we? I mean, it's the overall objective. It's the cleanup. So therefore, we're gonna restrict what somebody does. Go out there, only work a couple hours, get a certain pile, gotta wait till next week, or a little bit, another pile. Not different, I got two other families that are doing the one pile, and I have to stop them to go back. So it's got three different piles going to pick up versus whole lot more efficient. Once they clean the yard, which is what we want, nothing, then come out there. Be the third, the third side of the yard, or you make a pool some back yard.
It can't be picked up, but then the residents have to pay for it, whatever it is.
But they're not gonna have, they're probably not gonna have anything for the next two or three months, or four months, if they go ahead and clean it up, or let's just don't clean up yards. I don't understand. Whatever we have to do. So what you say, uh, some of, uh, other contracts, we do, whatever we have to do. Now, that's, now, I think that's the point. Get everything up, like a house, a pile. And, uh, uh, Golden, uh, uh.
It's, this is one of the challenges we're dealing with just today. Just, and I've been watching it purposely, and we knew it was out there, and there's the junk pile. So we try to take scenarios, realize scenarios, and tuck them in this contract. We have a year to work on all the bugs, but what is frustrating is that there's no right, there's just no, there's no way to address it because the Golden was supposed to do this, the property owner was supposed to do that, and here we are still with pile on the curb.
But that's not yard.
No, this is, it's the same, same thing.
We either want the yards cleaned up to look good, or we're gonna dilly-dally and make them put a certain pile out there, and that's why you put a certain pile there, which is an inefficient way as far as I can see for Golden in the first place. Better than to take up one time, or let's spread it out over three or four weeks where he stops at that half, or get it done. I mean, there's only so much cleaning up in the yard. Once you're done, you're done.
We try, we try to describe it, it's when service stops.
Haven't been out at the inner landfill, I don't get to see all the clues. We can do what you wanna do, but the resident will have to pay for the cost of doing it all at one time and get. Then you also have your tree surgeon to put them out there too.
Tree surgeon, different.
You can't, you can't always catch them doing it.
I mean, I, I understand that, but that's, that's another issue from a homeowner going out there.
They'll tell you every time, they'll tell you every time. I had that, it was over on, I think Lewis Street, that same issue, they told us they did it, but it was a big tree.
Yeah, Council, if you can, we've asked Richard to do a pilot program, pilot study, yard trash and junk. And to give us how many loads it increased every week, you pick up everything as you go. The bigger piles, he's supposed to be calling in and making sure we understand where they are. So we have until the end of October to understand pilot. And it's gonna show us trips to landfill, how much it increased disposal, how much time did it increase for him in this operation. The same thing with junk. So if we could put a hold on that, we could probably bring back to say, alright, look, this is what's gonna work in Tipton. You guys can make your mind up from that point on, but we really try to outline all the gray areas in here to make it a little more specific, to give something to work with. That really is the answer. If you want to do it weekly, there's just gonna be some cost, but what happened, yeah, today, it's just, it's unacceptable. And I will tell you that, you know, we could put, we could put everything we want in this contract, but if the collector's not, not doing what needs to happen, or if it's education that we have to do, then it's like a sword fight, and I don't think anybody's gonna win. It's just real frustrating.
Right, and what you're saying.
Thirty-six, car Michael, the whole front portion, there was an empty lot, another four feet long, another twenty feet long. If you want all that cleaned up at one time, not to be, somebody's gotta pay for the tip. Richard, whoever, don't pass it down to the rest. But if that's what y'all want, that's what we put in the contract.
Well, but you're gonna, and I don't have to address, I've got one across the street, down, twenty-eight. Not a house, but I hope, I hope it's one of them, goes to the dumpster. Not a bunch of houses, but, uh, I mean.
And that's not an issue. Like you've got three of, like you've got three people there with years of, all three of you get out there the same day, cleaning up, same thing.
Anyway, if that's okay, could we, could we put that, just, just put that hold, put that one on hold until we have Richard's data? Because really, to be fair to him, we have to understand what's happening in the field for collection, how many piles and how much, how much time he's absorbing it. If that's, that's okay with y'all.
Yeah, let's move on, because we got a lot, a lot of pages to cover here.
Ricky, hit the high, hit the high points.
Just under, on page five, there you can see the general summary. Contract should provide a set phone number, man, the level, what they have done. So far it is working out, really, they are in contact with me pretty much every day. I call them pretty much every day, back and forth. So far, it's working out.
I thought that we, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that we also had asked that there be somebody in a, uh, I will get that, sorry.
But they haven't, Richard hasn't done that. I was asking the management per, level person, we don't know, well, we know who that is, but the supervisor, that would be.
Yeah, that the public can call, that, because, you know, one of the issues we had was, you know, people complaining about the customer service, and they couldn't get, you know, if they called Golden directly, if the subscriber called Golden directly, they were very frustrated with that experience. And so we had asked that there be some liaison there that could, you know, someone needed to run out and look at something for that customer to help them out. That's, that's what I'm talking about.
They're calling them. If it's something larger than in the contract, I usually, uh, I would, uh, any call. It's kinda working that way, I don't know now about people calling in there.
Right.
I don't know about that. We could check that.
Okay, then let me ask you this. So I get a phone call, someone says there's an issue with their neighborhood, who do I call now, once this goes into that walk call?
Jack.
I call P.
I call Jack. Because you're the supervisor, you go out looking for piles.
I go to the house.
I think if it still comes from y'all, it needs to come down to Jake.
Okay, usually I just call Richard, and that works out fine, you know, so if that's still the, okay. Okay.
You know, there's other people have to get involved with it, and that's where Richard has too much going on sometimes to get involved.
Right.
I don't know, he may be handing that on down.
Right.
That, taking care of that one.
Yeah, we just, we don't understand that, and if he's gonna, if Mr. Brown is gonna continue to work with him, we just don't understand fully what he's, what that position is.
We need to have a, yeah.
Last week in October? Is that right? Okay, if we need to change some of this, we got to the end of October?
We got, we got some cases, so twenty-six, so, if pile appropriate, October, Monday, Thursday, uh, uh, uh.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay. All right.
All right, move on to page seven, talking about the yard waste.
Go quick.
Move on past that. All right, and that's five. And that's just to explain to somebody what it is. It's a pickup truck loaded three feet high. He talked about, you know, sending us a list. Moving on to commercial and industrial waste, it's just some word changes there, bulk container not exclusive. That's all, this is changing words, bulk container, roll off.
Do you have to have any, any interaction with anybody, if there's a company out of somewhere else that wants to provide those roll-offs? Or they, do they need to register with you in any way, or let you know?
I think that's something that we probably need to touch, they, we got other companies coming in, with Golden having to pay all his.
Yeah.
There should be some cost of another company coming in town.
Okay, well, how are we gonna do that? Is that something you can contact these people?
Well, in the past I have.
Okay.
I would see them and I would contact them, you get them by, if this is like, you know, that time, it's just a registration.
Right. Just the year where.
I think we need to attach some D.
Okay.
Because that's, that's really not fair to your local people.
Okay, well, and us, how do we, how do we have that conversation? How do we, is that something that you can?
That, that's part of the conversation, it's already been about the roll-off, non-exclusive.
But, 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 we haven't had the conversation though about requiring these companies to play by the same rules as our local companies.
You know, that could be, it could be, you know, Golden would be our eyes, they had a lot of that too.
Yeah.
Out there running the route.
That's right.
Then any of us, if we move forward with the sanitation code.
Right, that's what he just said, yeah.
We would be able to see it ourselves.
All right, you gotta note on that, so we can make sure that we explore that. Okay, okay.
On page eight, and the residential recycling, recycling has really dropped. Markets have dropped, they're barely able to get rid of the recycle, just like, you know, the garbage. These are a little bit different, the kind of haul it, that, uh, really costs a lot. The paragraph in there, negotiate, recycling, we can all sit back and, that was it, it is costly, but, uh, recycling.
Can't recycle it. Nobody wants to put it in the can. Yeah.
Twelve years maybe?
Our last, our last round of passports. All right, across, on page ten, Richard has proposed some to, uh, processing the yard waste, which we don't have a problem with. We'll do it themselves, we're all corporate, less expense for us. Some of that there with yard waste, I'll, I'll, be that for him, he, they, yard waste, they'll, probably. Okay, then on eleven, you see, we're trying to address the trucks, the, and connect to it, agree to all of this. We'll move on over to thirteen, where we have requested them to do route audit. Please, Rob, put it here, right? Same here. Do, and this is, you know, to keep count on all of them, make sure everybody. Moving on to page fourteen, under complaints, that's one of the areas there that also Richard has agreed upon, it is, it will be found back. I think it's not taken care of, it's been for a while. Whether it's the code that he comes back, whether he takes care of it. On over to sixteen, it talks about people on the back of the truck, I said, about that. Trying to address that, you know, putting a speed limit on it. That's what, there's nothing in OSHA that says you can do that. OSHA only says they suggest. I've looked that up years, researched it, it's just not, not regular. And also, third eye camera, we back all the vehicles, all the trucks, that's all kind of, large piles, missing cans, it's just a way for them to, uh, dock. Disposal rates, we took, we just took out a lot of stuff like that, that was related to the first contract. Related, uh. The only, the only change, my fee, data, data shows doing it five, could do it a week, change the rate, I could have put that for the contract. I don't think it actually says the word, uh, we won't find. It is, it's part of the termination agreement, is that right, Rob? And recycle. Alright, over on page twenty-two, under the exclusive. It just explains what I told, told you earlier about the roll off service. Front left, which we say bulk.
He thought, he, he wanted that, yeah.
I believe.
And that should be it. So you'll just please give it some thought. If there's anything else that you could think of, let us know, but we'll have it back in November work session with hopefully the data from the pilot.
Are these contracts linked with the county contract? At one time I thought they were. I thought they cross referenced each other, but they don't. I'm mistaken.
Urban.
Yeah. Right, but, but how, how was the? Yeah. Yeah, I remember that. Okay.
That question. I asked. Not sure.
It's almost the same capital as ours, I believe.
There's a, a little. But it will be. Wait one.
Alright, well, give us time to really read through this and, and let's, yeah, it's a lot to go through. And thank you for all, thank you all for all the work on this. I know it's been a tedious process and like you said, we do want it to look nice and, and do it in a cost efficient manner. Okay, and then if there's anything that anyone has that they still need to come out or need to go back in or need clarification, let's just email and, and make sure we're, you know, sharing all that information so we can have that discussion and, and make sure we do the right things for them. Okay, any other questions regarding? Okay, thank, thank you, Rick. Good job. Alright, Mr. Jeff West, do you want to come and share some information about Oak Ridge Cemetery? There is.
Good evening, Mary. Yep. I'll, I'll, if that's you on Friday, but I will have some mail problems on Friday. First thing I would like to talk about at Oak Ridge Cemetery. The need for an infant area, effectively known as baby land. I, I tried to find a better name, but everywhere in the state, they actually do what they call a baby. The current area we have now is completely full. We went down and looked at cemetery that's not being utilized. We look up there on board, the area outline and see there, the area we're proposing to create the new baby land for infant area. It's about one point seven acres right there in that area. Done some math on it, uh. We'd get about four hundred grave sites right there in that one area, which could last for a good long time, I hope. Now, what we're studying there, it's a low area where it's like a green field, but I think hopefully we can get more in that area. We do have a real need to get this done because we have a lot of the last block. Current location. Also, we need to talk about setting the price for this block. We've never had pricing in the other area. I have found out we're proposing selling government property. We can donate the oak chips, or digital certified at all of the services. That's where I currently support it, but there's no speech broker ever associated with the.
So you're just talking about baby, baby site that the talk.
Um, right. What I gave you all is the fee schedule for normal sized lots, plots which are five by eleven.
That, that's most pressing. This is where you commit. We do some guidance on how you want to go forward with this section number one. We're gonna take about six, seven thousand dollars to clear it, make sure it's ready to go. And there's four infant graves to one site. So Jeff has plotted all that out. I think we, this one point seven acres will get us by, but we need to determine it. How we want to set the fees for something like this and how we communicate with funeral homes just the same. So we are on, on the same page. But the ordinance is a little outdated, but that's the first order of business that we. Take a look at that for us so we can. That'd be a next step in the process.
Uh. Most places I've seen it.
Still, still birth to one year.
It's one year.
You know, right now, the way the ordinance is written, if, if the funeral home does donate all the services, they can prove that, then the city has not been charged for that. But again, Jeff's been contacting State Cemetery Association and making sure we understand. But from government property, we, we have to make sure we look closely at that. Again, we don't need immediate action, but we're, we're kinda need to go that way. That's why we're bringing this up to you. There's three things that we want to discuss tonight. Cemetery, there's a lot to it, obviously with the operation, what we have to do to plan for the future. And that's that we need to have the discussion now.
This year I've known about. Six years, but probably been more than I've been about, but. Um, I knew. We prepared one, two months ago. A area. Never would. But last. I think that was one.
That's the first step, first step that we need to. Have to have the space. So the next, I want, yeah, we just wanted to communicate that to you. Then if we could make sure Rob looks at. This state business with this regarding public property, we have to be mindful of that. And we have to be prepared to bring back something that they're setting or reviewing our cemetery space costs. Include the, but that, that, that sort of it for, for us.
Um, the next thing I'd like to talk about is. What's the future area that we have? What's the capacity that cemetery would now? You'll look up there, everything outlined in green, it's a perfect cemetery. Yellow is potential land that you don't, on the opposite side of a wet area there. I've actually been set at this very yard. I went back and counted. Lot based off of the maps that we have. I don't know that they're a hundred percent accurate, but look. This year we have been approved for fifteen thousand dollars in budget to do survey work in here. Basically, we'll get to where we have the whole cemetery survey in GIS and into software. So we'll, we'll know where everybody is. That's our goal. But for now, the old area. Down there on the bottom, very bottom of the screen there, you can see there's some vacant lots right in the middle, right there. There's the. Four hundred ninety-four right there. Uh, it is a wet area. Uh, I done some investigation last Friday, found out that there is supposedly green tiles. And you can see it on the scroll there. That's supposed to drink that. It is a very wet area, dirty wet, can't smoke grass that'll suck every time. But we're gonna investigate that, figure out what's wrong with the drainage. I'm figuring with three nineteen was why, that they might have pulled out the pipe or dug something up and made it stop drinking. So we're gonna look at that. Also. And it's there. Um, that map doesn't show exactly the way it is now. We've got another map that actually has names on that. But counting just the lots that had no one's lot. There's twelve hundred lots there. A lot is twenty by twenty six thousand over eight. I didn't count the ones that had some reception. I just counted the vacant ones. That's twelve hundred. So. Just roughly estimate, I think we've got twenty five hundred. Maybe close to three thousand grave site. Right now, we're averaging about fifteen per month. Or a hundred and eighty here. Which estimated that it was about thirteen point eight years. Pretty good lot. But we can have more definitive answer on lots. I just survey done, won't know exactly where everyone's buried. So that's kind of where we're at. Yes, everything gets yellow. Yeah. Yeah, we had. And that's just a wet area there.
So I'm assuming where the trees are, that's all.
We do have about six acres. I didn't mark it off, but there's six acres of possible. There is a lot of concrete out there.
That would be.
Yeah. Yeah, our hope is.
If, if you probably just buy some land somewhere else, build it up there, if, if we want to.
There's, there's two keys. It's the survey and the GIS will understand. I want, hopefully have a footprint to let you know how many years we have of sales space, number one. Number two, is there, if there's lots in between lots, then we know that. And the third, what, what's gonna, what's gonna happen after, which we have to be mindful of that too. So that's the, that's what I asked Jeff to, to look at, make sure we understand three components of the operation.
Um, and I've talked to Pete about this, talked to Rob about this, and the question that I get asked a lot is, you know, especially in the older part of the cemetery, central, central part is, you know, you have, you have gaps where someone must have purchased those lots a long, long, long time ago, but we're not sure where they are, you know, and so what do you do with that? And, and I've had people ask, can I purchase that lot that I don't think it's by, you know, some of my family, by my grandparents' graves? And we, you know, but it's already technically sold on our records, but we don't know where those people are. We don't know have they passed, have they not? Are they buried somewhere else and didn't realize there was a grave site here for them or, you know, those kind of things. So I don't know how you. Yeah. We never could get, get a clarification on that, so. Sometimes, I mean, some, some of these, all you had was his name. It was just, you know, that Jack Folt purchased this in nineteen twenty-seven and that's all you know.
It really is interesting. So I just, I want to start the conversation right now, if you need to know this. Yeah, we, we're gonna talk about that further. It's probably not the time, but vertical and then mausoleums to go upward. Uh, that, we have to think that way because realistically, they're not, you know, we can't, we can't buy any more adjacent land. So if you want to be in the cemetery business, we really start thinking along those lines. That's the purpose of pretty much bringing this forward to say we, we probably have to think about this a little differently. I just want you to have a clear snapshot and then lastly, we're gonna bring, bring suggestions about the current ordinance, really to update that a little bit.
Well, there's some very specific ones that I'll, I'll get with you separately and we can go that if, if they would like to cover that expense and, and go through that process. So we can talk about that. Okay. Okay.
Alright, so that, that cemetery's more to come on that. Rob, you'll help us with the infant business. And I'm gonna break that forward probably in November, cause really tech action on that, Jeff.
Okay.
Figures out what, what we can do and clear.
Okay.
How much time.
Alright, any other discussion on cemetery?
Yeah, cemetery.
Yeah, cemetery, Greenwood Cemetery, which is a public cemetery. And I'd like to ask this council if there's anything you could do to help us toward the, uh, the cleaning, uh, 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 upkeep of the cemetery? Cause I understand it's a public cemetery and it's in the black community. But now, if you, if you've got children, you dropped them off there, J T ready, you seen the condition the cemetery's in. Now, I, I know you're gonna say this is not a city problem, but I'm asking you if, if you could find some money to donate to us, to help us, like you say, you, uh, how much you say you just got a grant for fifteen thousand dollars?
No, we, we actually have budgeted for.
Oh, yeah, budgeted fifteen thousand. Now, I'm asking you if you could budget me three thousand to help with Greenwood? Cause his, I mean, there are city people buried there and there are county people buried there. And, and, and the burden is right now is on up, is, is on the cemetery club, just to try to keep it up and clean. One hundred and thirty feet. But you know, we talked about that and that, uh, fellow that owns that, we had to go across, we, we couldn't find him to put, to, so we could, you know, get it extended too, cause it ain't but a hundred and thirty feet. And if we could, you know, if we could put it in, in the city name, you know, it, it would be a great help to us. Because actually right now, see, nobody owns a cemetery, that's why we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't do anything. We can't charge people for going up there to bury, like you can charge for himself, because if you own cemetery. But we don't own cemetery, so we can't charge a, 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 a family for going up there. We depend on, on the funeral director, you ask the family if they would give us a donation to help us with the upkeep of the cemetery. Wish is to no avail. Because if, if I put your money in my pocket and all of it get mixed up together, it all look like my money, that's what they do. And, well, I'm asking, huh? Well, it's possible.
Well, but I think there was some confusion too, um, at the time that you and I had talked Johnny about who actually owns that cemetery. Like, like in, in our case, we know that we own, you know, our cemetery and the people that have purchased plots own their plot. But there was some.
We don't own it. We don't own it.
I think, I think they had tried to do that and it was very convoluted, a lot of records were, um, not recorded properly and things. We probably need to try to do another title search and see where the stack was.
I mean, we, we, we tried endlessly, days and nights to find out how we can get this thing done. But, uh, it was given to the deeds say, this is what the deeds say, uh, uh, what's the captain H H. Give the cemetery to the colored people of South Tiff. Of, of, of Tiff period, that's what the deed read. But the deed, that deed was in nineteen oh eight.
But there was, there was also some confusion about, um, I think at one time, some of the cemetery, excuse me, the funeral directors were charging people for the plots and the funeral director would just keep that money and then, so there was just a lot of, yeah, I don't know. But there was just a lot of confusion about the, um, the ownership and, you know, because we had looked at the possibility of annexation. We had looked, we had, uh, talked to Bruce, you know, who knows, you know, has buried, um, has a lot of connections with the state, you know, as far as funding or grants or, you know, we had talked about bringing the, um, I can't remember the woman's name, but she was the director of African American Studies for the state. You know, so there were all these layers that we could potentially help with, but the, the challenge for us is the city initiating that was, it was in the county. It was not in the city, so, you know, we go back to that discussion, yeah.
They, they going to the county?
Yeah, we went to the county and the county, see, the county excuse was this, if we help with that cemetery, then we got to help with all the cemeteries in the county.
Like little private church cemeteries and things like that.
The cemeteries in the county owned by the church.
That's what you're saying, if it's a public, if it's a public's different.
Yeah.
It's either public or it's not.
Right.
Public might help with private.
Yeah.
I think it's a conversation we ought to have. I do, I would like for Bruce to be a part of that conversation because I think he could be, um, helpful to, even in the interim to provide, um, some guidance for potential grant money for, um, maintenance, because it continues to deteriorate and they're trying to do all that they can to maintain it with volunteers and donations and that kind of thing, so.
I would love to do that.
Rob, is there any way that you could, what would it take? Can, can you look as far as maybe not a full fledged title search, but could you do some research to see, um, you know, sort of how convoluted that issue was? Um, at least we can start there, because we're gonna have to know who owns the property and we're gonna have to know who owns the contiguous property if we're gonna talk about, um, potential annexations. So we need to look at, at all of that to, um, to say, okay. Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's, it's, you know, when we've done our community cleanup, if you've not gone to Greenwood Cemetery, it's really pretty fascinating. Go with somebody like Johnny who knows the families and the stories and, and, you know, the people that were, um, buried there and, and, and it, it's, it's really quite fascinating and it is part of our history and so.
It is a historical cemetery.
Yeah.
It's like, it's been, it's, the first body was there, the one that we have, so, but was, was laid, was laid to rest there in nineteen oh eight. So it's, it's, you know, it's figured up eighteen, but, uh, uh.
But I do think that we should, you know, as a public cemetery, um, and, and it being in the unincorporated area of the community, that we do need to have our friends at the county as part of this process with us, um, because it is the historical aspect of Tiff County. Um, so I don't know how we, how we do that, um, I'd be, you know, be glad to make some calls if y'all would make some calls.
Well, I, I want to bring you to it, bring it to your attention that we do need help. And whatever help you could, that, that we, we, we can get from the city, because there are city residents buried there and county residents buried there because it's a public cemetery, but nobody wants to help.
And we're all helping with that.
That's what I'm saying. Okay, that's why I'm asking you, that's why I come to ask you, that we have to put it in our budget.
Let me, let me throw, let me throw something out to you. Now, anytime that there's three of us together, we have a forum, so we have to be careful about that. But why don't, um, in the next month or so, and I know, but we're getting ready to be busy with holidays and everything, why don't we schedule a meeting with some of our friends at the county commission to meet there at the cemetery? To walk through and, um, I would suggest we, um, include Chairman Thompson, um, Donnie, Esther, Melissa and, um, probably Tony. I think Brer, I think would be worth that, I don't know who the actual commissioner is for that neighborhood, is it Donnie?
Uh, yeah, well, Donna and Melissa.
Not, okay, it kind of splits in there, okay. And, um, why don't we meet there at the cemetery and we'll just talk and we'll get Bruce involved and, and see if we can start putting something together to, to help. Cause I, you know, Bruce is just so knowledgeable with that kind of thing, so, what do you think about that?
Wait, okay.
Or do, I, I mean, whoever, it doesn't matter to me, that's just my suggestion.
I've asked Bruce, see, see, the veteran administration was gonna give us some money, cause, but the veterans are buried all over the cemetery. The only way the veterans, if we had it, veterans in one park, then the veterans, uh, to be able to take care of that park. But we got veterans all over the cemetery.
Would probably be better if you maybe could be involved, cause you know, the, the, you know, being in the, in the funeralizing business, um. Yeah, I mean, you could probably, you know, but whoever needs to be, and I would say meet there at the cemetery, so people can see the conditions, because that's, that's very important. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
How's that sound? Okay? Interesting, hmm. Right. Well, that, if, if, if you can check on all that, Rob, and see who that, you know, let's, let's come up with a plan, I know that sounds. Okay, all right, so you good with that? Will that be a good first start to, to do that? Okay, all right, so can you report that back to us maybe in the next month or so, Rob? Okay, okay, all right, and we'll come up with a plan Johnny and, and, cause we do need to. All right, any other questions about Oak Ridge Cemetery and, and all that? Okay, all right, let's move on to the L M I G appropriation.
Okay, um, is that time, here again, when it's time for us to apply for a L M I G funding? The list that I submitted is like proposed list that, uh, we need to look at, we're gonna cut it down a little bit. Um, after talking to Pete, I think we need to cut around to six twenty-five.
Six fifty is really the max, I would recommend you all sticking to.
The, uh, L M I G that were, uh, expected to give twenty twenty, two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Two sixty-five, three sixty-eight, exactly, they've already got the numbers out, um. These are proposed streets, um, I know that there were a couple that people asked for. I would like to offer up any of, would like to go and ride, look the roads, I'd be glad to, just, because I've kind of got a ranking order that I would give to me and I don't have it written down, but, um, some of this would be moved around. Just based off the road itself, but.
Yeah, just, just like you did, have done in the past, if you'll just take the list and go and ride, uh, you just mark the ones you really feel strongly about.
The one that's really bad.
That is, well, they're, yeah, they're all really bad, but some of them are.
Timmons is really, really bad, yes, yes, I've been, I, I, I wanted to move that one.
Like twenty-eight, it's bad, but it's not as bad as, uh. Like you, forty-six, if you look at those, you've got serious rust and an alligator track, those roads are gonna fail fairly quick. I, to me, I would rank those higher than twenty-eight, twenty-eight's got some, but it's not. The sub bay is good, here on those streets, it's failing, that's why roads run out.
Um, do you feel comfortable emailing us with your rankings or do you want to have people ride with you?
Yes, I, I would be glad, I'll go back and, and put an actual ranking with each, with each.
And keeping it within that budget that we need to stay within, so, that would, I think that would help us to understand.
Look at them.
Okay, let's do that and then anybody can contact you that might be interested in riding or getting more details.
Yeah, and also, and just, it's to be fair to, to some districts like Central, um, and then Tipton Eldorado and Tipton Avenue, those are main arteries that happen to be in your district, um, but they're long runs and a lot of, a lot of expense, so.
If we don't widen, uh, 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 chairman, if we could just, just redo it, from, from eighty-two over to, to Magnolia. It is true, that, I mean, uh, maybe that's why dealerships have, have a problem selling cars, cause the roads over there. And buy a new car, you can't drive that freight.
So if you'll please do that for us, um, we're, we have to have the, um, L M I G application turned in, uh, by, uh, we have to vote, we'll have to vote on it in November, uh, so we could, uh, we could be done, done with that.
Okay.
Everybody good with that plan?
Good to know.
All right, all right, Jeff, uh, this is your night tonight, uh, you want to talk about the thirteen utility meter collector?
But I'm gonna ask Jonathan to help me with this, uh, the collectors were referred to as collectors for vehicles that are out and built their own, basically, their own, uh, saleway. Right now, we've got seven, seventy-three, uh, they done, you probably gave thirty and we can set it down thirteen. But thirteen, it's late because they're, the ones we have now are all free. Something around January, three, like they were.
Okay, and you'll see in our, um, information that Jeff submitted in our packet, this is a budgeted item, so.
And I've got an actual code from now with two hundred nine thousand four hundred and five fifty-three.
So it came in a little under budget, okay, good. What?
But, sorry, we're gonna be thirteen. The thirteen will fill the biggest area that God has brought to this city, that twenty-four percent, nineteen twenty-five, that they're planning to capture that would sound to drive by, they pocketed out. They probably will, because is it worth that twelve, fifteen thousand dollars flipped up against it's actually for front field, drive bys that they have? It would probably take more than thirteen to get that other, that they're looking at that. Uh, we, we would be glad to look at that a little bit further, but looking at the money right up front, if. Believe it, drive by. Just go out and be sure that, you know, here, now we're not gonna miss that, only if it's found somewhere. Five G, I would say probably look at that. Sure. Probably. Uh, all right. And for probably, a large one, as far as life, uh, life. I would get five, uh, for that life.
You're saying, I understood you say the three G's going away and that's what we have, so we gotta do something.
When they cut it off, we, we don't have it.
But if, if that's going away, we would have, I mean, we would have to, yeah, you know.
The thirteen, we would just get it by, that, that covers what we're hoping to have. Uh, there's eleven thousand five hundred, uh, and about six thousand dollars. And, and that depends on whether we have, we have overpowered, uh, got powered.
All right, any other discussion on that? Well, it sounds like what Jeff is saying though, is it, is it worth that, is it worth that extra for those little pockets?
Let's take a look at it.
Okay. Yeah, I think we, we gotta rely on. I think we gotta rely on there.
We could probably get five or six.
All right, so you'll present that back to us at the regular meeting, okay? Okay, y'all good with that, getting that information at the next meeting, regular meeting, and we expect it there, okay? Okay, all right, let's move on to, uh, the bids for the police and fire vehicle equipment, uh, Steve Hyman.
Air Council, uh, we have the, open the bid, uh, on the October the second for the emergency equipment. Mayor Council, uh, we have the, open the bid, uh, on the October the second for the emergency equipment. Uh, for the FY twenty, uh, vehicles that the police department and the fire department get. Uh, staff recommends awarding the bid to McClaggan Communications in the amount of eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. That I bid, uh, eight police vehicles and one fire.
Okay. Any questions on, on this bid, uh, on that bid to do that, and the recommendation?
This is a budget item, too.
All right, everybody good with that? Not? Good job. All right, uh. All right, next item is discussion of proposed amendments on our alcoholic beverage license, I mean, ordinance for bottle houses and brown bagging. That's it, Rob, we're gonna handle that.
Jeff brought up, let's go, uh, three bottles of wine, alcohol. When we were looking at it, uh, trying to. There, there was all, uh, the plan, uh, was one of, of what they call, uh, a bottle house. And also, uh, one restaurant, plan, uh, called, uh, a bottle house. Like, if one is allowed, the restaurant, uh, but. Now, we should be allowing brown bag. That bottle. A restaurant, uh, a bottle with. Those were restaurants, uh. Five. They, that a lot, one, my old, that. But, you can add, uh, one, uh, yeah. Something on purpose, bring them by, or, uh, like. My seat. Black, orange, green, uh, on the line. Don't know what, uh, that, that, it, restaurant. Oh, man. On the top. So. Every profile. They have, uh, uh, for, uh, for, uh, for, uh, bottle. One, two, uh, for, uh, bottle house, for buying. Okay. There's a, uh, uh, uh. No, the plan, uh. And. So, then I, uh. So, but then I showed, uh. I bought a wine at the restaurant. So all that, uh. One, two, five, round. Restaurant, uh. One. Uh. Or. Uh. Yeah. Uh. 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 Uh, uh, uh. 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 Well, I, uh, uh. 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 Uh.
Is there any, um, I mean, if they're interested in that, is there any pressing timeframe on them being told they can or can't? Okay. 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 So we need to look into this, uh, soon then, so we can get that person that isn't financed, that we're saying, okay? It'd just be up to the owner of the, the business to decide, yes or no, yeah. Well, and, and I, I, I kinda like that, a little less government involvement.
Uh.
Talking about, uh. People that would be wanting to, that I, uh, I'm gonna call it Mark's, uh, Mark's hood, cause I cannot say the name. Right, but it's the one on A.
Flower gallery.
Okay, that business would be.
Because they have events.
Yeah, um, right now, the nail salons, the, uh. The nail salons do an identity permit, we charge people dollars for that, and they're supposed to keep that away from them.
Let's be thinking about it, because we do, uh, the.
I think we.
They're not gonna try. The same, we have, uh, one salon, and, uh, nail salon.
Hold on.
The, um, the order that's, uh, it. I, I don't. Yeah, but I know it's, you know, what we're, for, for, uh, basically, art.
Yeah, hold on.
If y'all wanna add, he did say like a beauty shop, um, y'all wanna add that, I could see like a front.
An art gallery, art studio, bed and breakfast, um.
Uh. Suburban.
Golf course, just defined by the city of Tipton Land Development, Oregon. Boat, uh, yeah, boat, okay, so. Actually, no. Okay, well.
Just think about it, but I know last time we talked, I was mainly thinking about the brown bag. But after, there's just a correct term.
But for example, the flower gallery, which is an art gallery and art studio, they from time to time will have artists come in, and they'll do sort of an expose on their art, and have a little, you know, soiree where people are invited to come in, and you can bring your, you know, what they'd like to do, I think, is to say, why don't you bring your own bottle of wine, we'll provide the food, you can meet the artist, you can browse the gallery, and that kinda thing. I think that's really what they're looking to do, and right now, we don't have a place within our ordinance that allows that particular event to happen. Where there's, where they're not involved, where they're not, it's not an, an open container, you know, when you walk out or something, so. Yeah, that's a different, that's a different thing. That, that's a difference, because. And it's cost prohibitive for a small art gallery like the Flower Gallery to go and hire ABC catering company, so I've gotta pay you, you know, whatever the money is. Rather, and, and what they're saying is they brought, say, you bring your own. We may hire caterers, provide the food, but we're not gonna guarantee for the alcohol sales. Bring your own. So, um, that's what they're looking at. Right, right. Okay, any other questions about that? Okay, just read through the, read through the ordinance that was provided from, uh, it was City of Perry, wasn't it, rural path? Uh, and just think about that, and, um, and if we've got some folks that are asking about it, then I think it's something we need to, uh, to. All right, the, um, next item is just a resolution for an amended alcohol license for the Shell Travel Center located at six oh three Old McGrave, and that's in our packet. Jeff, anything we need to know about that?
They, they renewed their alcohol losses for twenty twenty.
Okay. Okay, so pretty simple. All right, city manager report. Okay, all right, uh, mayor and council comment, uh, you wanna start us off, Councilman Terrell?
I'm good.
Okay, all right.
I know it's hard, but.
You're good, well, we know you're good, just didn't know if you had anything to say. Um, I, uh, I just wanted to share with you that, um, last week, um, that, uh, Councilman Terrell and Pete and, uh, attended the, uh, George Municipal Association District eleven update that was in Fitzgerald, and got a lot of good information. Um, there were some really good presentations there, and, uh, talked about things that are going on with CMA, and, um, there's some upcoming training going on, so, um, you should be getting your emails about that. Um, and I do, I have the opportunity to serve on our training board, so, um, having a lot of training in Tipton is really exciting. That gives us the opportunity to attend and participate in that, and at much less cost, because no travel expense for us, obviously, in that case. So, uh, just make sure that you're checking your emails and, and participating in that, so, um, that's all I've got to comment on. Council folk?
Covered all my last time. See, I pretty much, uh, captured what I said.
Ask mayor?
No, I, I think they had like two, or three things.
Yeah, that, that Bald Oster did is a special event, um, you know, and it brought in, and they had other events going on, that, you know, they'd have like kids' activities, and, and maybe some music and that kinda thing. But all the food trucks would be congregated in one specific site, and, um, and, yeah, it was just kind of a, a test, a very unofficial test of the community to get their input. And it was, I think of all the people that commented, I don't remember the exact numbers, I think only had two people who were reluctant about it, but the majority was, I mean, quite a few people, um, commented that they thought that that would be a good thing, that they would enjoy that, and that they'd go on to these types of events in other places. That it would be good.
They're, they're from our, uh, recently after a lot. And they're, not really making a lot of work, but.
And a special event, yeah. And I think that's what, and that's what we were sharing, yeah, yeah. It wasn't that we were just gonna allow food trucks anywhere, anytime, yeah.
I have loved that the city of Bald Oster, they don't have.
Right, which I, I think is what we would, would be, yeah, let's talk about it. And, um, piggybacking on, um, what you were saying, Eve, Eve, I wanna compliment you on the article about the transparency and the open record, and getting people involved in government, and y'all, um, as I said, I think are doing a very good job with encouraging people to come to the meeting, contact, watch it on, we've got the YouTube channel, we're two cover in the paper, Frank covers on the grapevine. And, um, it, 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 we appreciate the engagement of our citizens, and so many times, we don't hear anything unless there's a complaint, an issue with trash, or, you know, a problem somewhere. So, um, so when our citizens, uh, are engaged and have feedback and follow up with us, we, we very much appreciate that. So thank you for having all the information there, and if they have questions, or who they contact, or how, how they get involved, so I appreciate that. All right, anything else to come for the council? Good job, everybody. Let's, call us adjourned.